Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're excited to have you all here in person or tuning in remotely. At this time, I'd like to welcome for our invocation, our Second Lieutenant Dave Rosenfeld, and he is going to lead us on our invocation, and our pledges will be led by Captain Benjamin Strabala and Second Lieutenant Samuel Strabala. If you'll please stand, I want my right to please turn off your cell phones. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we make our earnest prayer that you keep our county, state, and nation in your holy protection. As this court convenes today, Lord, give these commissioners wisdom, clarity of thought, and full understanding of the issues at hand to make the excellent decisions. For those of us dependent upon this court, cultivate in us a spirit of humility and obedience to accept, understand, and even applaud these decisions and rulings given here today. Above all, incline our hearts to entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another and for our fellow citizens at large. And finally, may your grace dispose us to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before you so that we may continue to live as a happy, prosperous, and productive nation. Grant our supplications we beseech thee through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
Well, thank you all for that lovely invocation and for leading us in our pledges. We're glad to have you all here today. Before we start the meeting and go to our public input, I just want to take a moment and give a big Denton County shout-out to our Technology Services Department. Last week, they did, they do a great job every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I look back on COVID and all the, all the adaptations to our operating processes that, that we had to deal with, and our Technology Services Department were there every step of the way for years as we had to do things new and in different ways. But last week, when, when there was the system-wide disruption around the world with this computer upgrade that went out that was faulty, I will just say that bright and early in the morning, I was on the phone with Kevin because I was watching these news alerts early, early in the morning, and they had been working through the night, dealing with Denton County system and making sure that we have continuity of government and provided their services to our court system and our jail and, and all the different users of our system. And I just want to give them a big hand and say, Kevin, please stand on behalf of all your people. And thank you. And I, I do just want to say thank you for, for y'all just being some hidden heroes, and, and I really appreciate that on behalf of the, the county officials and the million residents that make Denton County home. Thank you for, thank you for doing what y'all, y'all do so great. Y'all just make us proud. So thank you. All right. We have a few people registered for public comment, and I will remind our speakers today that our time limit is three minutes. And so our first one that had registered online was Alexis Wilkinson. Alexis, are you here? Good morning. Glad to have you here. Come on forward. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I believe that microphone's on, and we'll go ahead and, and start your, your three minutes. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Lexi Wilkinson, and I'm a Denton County resident. I've been employed in volunteering in the human services sector of our county for accumu- cumulative past three years. During this time, I've had the privilege of working with a wide and diverse range of individuals. Through this service, I've learned intimately of these folks' circumstances in the systems in our county with which they interact. And during my past and current time of service, a consistent and overwhelming trend has emerged. That trend being the vast number of individuals in our county suffering from severe and persistent mental illnesses and the disproportionate lack of resources to help them obtain and maintain pre-illness onset levels of functioning. The local mental health authority tasked with providing these services to our county's indigent and most vulnerable work adamantly to provide the support, thus we know. However, what has become apparent is the ill effectiveness of programs such as the assertive community treatment or ACT program designed to address the people with the highest needs. This ineffectiveness being due simply to the difficulty accessing the service. On many occasions, myself and colleagues have worked to build rapport with clients so that in the brief periods of lucidity between episodes, we could encourage seeking services such as the ACT program, only to be told there is no space available. I urge you Commissioners' Court to support the Denton County MHMR Center's adoption of a policy priority to expand the capacity and availability of mental health services such as the ACT program. Hopefully, to that end, we can begin to address the gap in service needs of our county's most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next is Mr. Willie Hudson. Good morning, Mr. Hudson.
Teresa, talk to you about what I'd like to do first. If that's allowed, now that I don't...
Sir?
Move on. Did she talk to Teresa?
No.
Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and do your three minutes?
I'll do it. Three minutes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
I, I think I still need to go ahead and say what I was going to say because if it happens, then no one will know what to do.
Okay.
But I have a disorder. My doctors, doctors are trying to figure out what it is, and what the symptoms look like is I just space out. I don't know where I am. So I've asked Chelsea to come up and grab me by the hand and walk me out of here so that I don't just look totally ignorant. And so I wanted that explanation to come before what I want to talk about because it's going to take up all my time, but that's all right.
All right, now we'll start it over. We'll start it over, Mr. Hudson. Go right ahead.
Okay. I, I'm just saddened by things that's happened. And after those guys, the young men came up and did the pledges, I thought that that would be a good time to sing the song. But Sony won't let us, so I heard. I want you all to join with me and get ahold of Sony and say, let us sing the pledge. Something good is happening. Man. But anyway, that's another story.
I understand.
I went out to the cemetery a week or two ago and just heartbroken because of how it looks. And I've got some more information coming that I can share with you all about that cemetery. And, and then the main thing is access right now. Can't go out there until you have, we, we go according to your schedule. Well, it's a public cemetery. We should be able to go out there more than that, and we shouldn't need any permission to do it. So I'm letting you know. I'm, I'll be back with some information and some, some, some things that are at our disposal so we can go to that cemetery more often. Thank you for the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. All right, our next registered public comment forum is from Melinda Preston. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. I just, I'm just very grateful today for incredible people in our lives and in our community. And I just wanted to read something. I want to give a shout-out to Commissioner Kevin Faulkner. And, you know, guys, we are really, really blessed. Denton County Citizens Defending Freedom had a fantastic event with Skytree Book Fairs, featuring incredible participation from the Colony Police and Fire Department, Judge Karen Alexander, Republican-elect Don Way, Denton County Tax Assessor, House Representative, Republican-elect Mitch Little, Denton County Commissioner Kevin Faulkner, and the Colony Mayor Richard Boyer. They shared their roles as city and county leaders and read to the kids and answered questions. It was a positive day, and many good books were purchased. Y'all, it is so, it's such a blessing to see the little kids sitting there, and you have Commissioner Faulkner reading a book and sharing what he does for, you know, for the, the community, what he does for Denton County. So many people don't understand what y'all do. And so it was just, I just want to say thank you, and my heart is full. And it was exciting just to see the kids get excited and dream. Dream about what they one day may be. So thank you, guys, for all you do. Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner, for all you have done, and we appreciate you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Melinda. It's not a fun program. All right, next is Ms. Chelsea Stallings. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, seven-six-two-oh-one. Two weeks ago, on Saturday, July sixth, I attended the county-sponsored and promoted visitation day out at St. John's Cemetery, which was previously discussed and approved by this body. When I arrived at the cemetery, an Office of History and Culture volunteer was on hand to direct me where to drive and where to park. I followed his directives. As I drove further down, I also saw that yellow caution tape had been attached from the fence on the east side of the road connecting all the way to the cemetery gate fence, essentially cordoning off the private property road further past the cemetery. Excuse me. I had woken up a little bit late that morning, and so by the time I got to where all the other cars were parked, I was really happy to see that over a dozen cars were already there and already parked in the grass off to the side of the road. Because all of the grassy area was already occupied by cars, because the yellow caution tape had already been put up by the county, because county staff and volunteers were on hand that day, and most especially because this body has assured us that the public, that these once-quarterly visitation days have been agreed upon by the residents nearby St. John's Cemetery in the spirit of cooperation, I decided to park my car on the road in front of the yellow caution tape instead of behind someone else's car on the grass so as not to block them in. It's like parking at a sporting event or a concert which we have all attended. So about thirty or forty-five minutes or so into the event, all of a sudden, somebody starts honking their horn nonstop, and then we all hear someone yelling to move the vehicle parked on the road. I knew it was mine, so I immediately grabbed my keys and headed to the front. As I approached my car, I saw the Office of History and Culture Executive Director Peggy Riddle standing next to the driver's side window of another vehicle on the road directly facing mine, obviously trying to leave. However, as they both saw me approaching my car and getting into it, the driver of the vehicle starts aggressively gassing their car as Peggy is walking away from it. As I was trying to back my car up, the driver of the other car was very intentionally trying to ram into me and was so close to the front of my car that I couldn't see the front of theirs. I want to be very clear and not mince my words. Your Office of History and Culture Executive Director urged a resident to almost run me over at a county-sponsored, county-promoted, county-staffed, and county-managed event. I have tried to tell you before that she threatens me in private, and her unprofessionalism has now hit new heights. She is prioritizing personal vendettas instead of doing real historic work for St. John's Cemetery and the county, and this is not okay. And if it were the other way around, had it been me who was aggressive, I'm sure that I would have been in jail for days if I had acted that way towards somebody at a county event. So I don't expect one, but I do believe that Judge Eads, you owe me an apology for allowing your director to act this way towards constituents. Truthfully, she should be fired, but I know that that won't happen. With that said, I will move forward with my activism, but I do want to go ahead since we are going the route of personal vendettas. Since the county has taken over this event, it's not in ADA compliance. And if someone were to fall out there at the cemetery, that's now going to be the county's liability, not ours. And finally, if there are guests who attend the events that are veterans...
Your, your time is up. Thank you.
With guard dogs, Peggy Riddle, you can pick up their poop at the county event.
Thank you. All right, next is Toni Harris. Good morning. Is there a Toni Harris here? You'll pass? Good. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. Next, let's go to item three A. And if our guests will come forward, this is approval of a proclamation recognizing cadet First Lieutenant Ben Strabala in receiving his third milestone achievement in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. Good morning.
Good morning.
We are so excited to have you here, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to introduce any special guests that you have with you today?
Yes, sir. I have my mother here with me. I also have my brother, Cadet Second Lieutenant Strabala. We also have the Rosenfeld family extending from this end all the way down. And then in the middle, we have Captain Barrow and Captain Williams, and Captain Barrow's wife as well. Thank you all for being here.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. We're very proud of you. So I'm going to go ahead and read this court proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing cadet First Lieutenant Ben Strabala in receiving his third milestone achievement in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. And whereas Ben Strabala currently is a rising high school senior holding a four-point-oh GPA and an active member of the National Honor Society and the elected student council president three years running. And whereas Ben has been a member of the Civil Air Patrol for the past three years and has achieved both the first and second milestones and has served in various roles such as cadet commander, deputy commander, and first sergeant. And whereas Ben has recently completed the third milestone of the CAP Cadet Program, a feat accomplished by only three percent of all cadets and has been promoted to the grade of cadet captain and has become eligible to represent the United States in the International Air Cadet Exchange. And whereas Ben has served his community by leading the Pledge of Allegiance at the DFW National Cemetery Veterans Day and Memorial Day remembrance services, and by serving in some capacity in every squadron parade, he will now be challenged to lead and serve junior-ranking cadets, not just in the hometown squadron but around the state. And whereas Ben has been recognized for his sustained excellence in all four areas of cadet life, which are leadership, aerospace, fitness, and character. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby celebrate Cadet First Lieutenant Ben Strabala in receiving his third milestone achievement in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor him in the same. Done in open court, this is the twenty-third day of July, two thousand and twenty-four, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. I just want to say, Ben, congratulations. It is great to see you and your other cadets as y'all come through and, and to see the, the rich accomplishments that you've already made in high school. And we can only envision the contributions you'll make, not only to Denton County but to the state and to the US in your, all your future endeavors. So I want to say thank you. Thank you so much for, for taking this on.
Thank you, Judge Eads.
Any other, Commissioner Mitchell?
I just want to thank you, Ben, again, for all your hard work. And, and not only are you working in the cadets, you're working also in school. So thank you so much for being an outstanding student, outstanding individual, and looking forward to what you're going to accomplish in the future. Thank you. And to your parents also.
Absolutely. Yes, Commissioner Edmondson.
Ben, congratulations. This is a wonderful program. But I wonder if you would explain for our audience, both here... here and, and watching, exactly what does the Civil Air Patrol do? And what does, what do you as a captain in, in the Civil Air Patrol do?
Yes, ma'am. So the Civil Air Patrol is a congressionally chartered program. We are the official auxiliary of the United States Air Force, and we have three missions. The one I'm primarily involved in is cadet programs, but we also have missions for aerospace education and emergency services. One really cool fact about Civil Air Patrol is in World War II, they were an active participant after Pearl Harbor in spotting submarines and sinking those submarines. So it's, it had a way more active role in, in the wartime effort way back then, but currently, we're still involved with the military and DOD. We routinely do, well, as an organization, we do interception drills for the Air Force for like the Super Bowl. They will, will fly one of our Cessnas, and the Air Force will intercept it with fighter jets. So we're still very, very much involved with Department of Defense and the military. But on the local unit level, I'm fortunate enough to command a squadron of thirty cadets, and we, we have meetings every Monday from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Denton Enterprise Airport. And cadets can learn leadership skills at those meetings, and they have the opportunity to, excuse me, attend events outside of the meeting, in the wing, nationally, and in other parts of the world as well, as Judge Eads mentioned, the International Air Cadet Exchange. So there's many facets of the program. It appeals to cadets and senior members alike. We have two sections for cadets and senior members to contribute, and it's, it's just a fantastic program. I cannot speak enough good about it. It's, it's fantastic. Yes, ma'am.
Do you all attend the same high school?
We do not. So I'm, I'm from Munster, Texas, so about forty-five minutes north of here, but I make the trip down to Denton every Monday to attend meetings. It's, it's forever worth it. I never question the forty-five minute drive. It's a perfect program, a great program for, for youth development. Yes, ma'am.
And now, when you finish high school, do you automatically go into the military? Or?
Yes, ma'am. So if you achieve the Mitchell Award, progressing from an NCO, non-commissioned officer in the program, to an officer, you're guaranteed an E3, so an accelerated grade if you enlist in the Air Force, accelerated pay grade. So you're, you're set up there if you decide to enlist, but also the service academies, like the U.S. Air Force Academy, look very favorably on Mitchell and Airheart recipients, and especially the highest milestone, the Colonel Spots Award. They all look favorably on those awards for admission into the service academies. So there's a great opportunity to transition directly into service. Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you so much. I think it's a great program, and you'll do well in life.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, Judge, real quick, if you don't mind. So I appreciate your role, being a role model for the, the youth, especially here in the Denton County area. Obviously, we need more individuals like yourselves that do positive things for society. So congratulations on this award and look forward to seeing how well you do in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Perfect. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
[applause] Let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda.
Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda, or do we have a motion for approval as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of order-making appointments. Item 2B is approval of the intradepartmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of budgetman request 101800 for the public health to transfer $4,079 for medical supplies to administrative equipment to cover the cost of the Texas Focus X-ray Unit. Any appropriate action? Item 2D is approval of budgetman request 101820 for public health to transfer $4,000 from the Public Health Environmental Division Technology Equipment and $1,000 from clothing benefit to postage to fund the additional septic system-related mellings, and $300 from the Public Health Clinical Division Vaccines to Utilities to fund a WIC utility late fee for a total transfer of $5,300. Item 2E is approval of budgetman request 101870 for the Criminal District Attorney Treasury purchases to transfer $20,000 from technology software services to evidence expense, and $6,900 for administrative equipment to legal services for a total transfer of $26,900 to funds to be used for expert testimony and to ensure there are enough funds for the remainder of the fiscal year for legal services. Item 2F is approval of budgetman request 101890 for public facilities to transfer $9,800 from the Loop 288 Central Plant Water Service, with $7,000 to Hulcher Building Water Service, and $2,800 to Precinct 3 Government Center Water Service to fund the water utilities for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next, let's go to item 3B, approval of a resolution approving the draft INCO Area 911 District Fiscal Year 2025 Financial Plan pursuant to the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 772, as amended and providing an effective date in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll go ahead and do item 4A, which is a public hearing to discuss, one, the approval of the Denton County Clerk's Records Archive Plan, two, approval of the fund plan for the continued collection of the $10 preservation and restoration fee by the county clerk, and any appropriate action. We have a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have a plan in our backup from the county clerk regarding this continuation of this plan. Is there any members in the public wishing to speak of in favor or opposed to the Denton County Clerk's Records Archive Plan? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Denton County Clerk's Records Archive Plan?
Move to hearing.
Hearing none. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction 24-2819 held in June 2024.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, which is approval to dispose of miscellaneous furniture and office supplies in compliance with Chapter 263.152A3 of the Local Government Code for Disposition of Surplus Property and Approval to Dispose of Abandoned Inmate Property in Compliance with Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 18.17.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we do have a revision to item 6C. I'll go ahead and read this revised language here, which would be approval of the usage of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding and appointment of evaluation committee for CSP 24-2812 Emergency Operations Center, include Chris Lansey, Construction Coordinator of Public Facilities, Robin Thomas, Communications Manager of the Sheriff's, Felicia Hopkins, Division Manager of Public Health Emergency Preparing and Division, Samantha Taylor, Director of Office of Emergency Management, Jeremy Crowe, Facility Division Manager of Public Facilities, and Evaluation Policy Advisory Committee Advisory Member, Chris Matheson, Facility Division Manager of Public Facilities, in any appropriate action. The Chair, move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6D, approval of usage of American Rescue Plan, ARPA funding for the purchase of asset Panda software licenses to be used in conjunction with Workday ERP system among multiple departments in amount of $17,658.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6E, approval of purchase from InfoTech Research Group through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contact, DIR CPO 5251, in amount of $98,974.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6F, approval of the purchase and implementation of 30 Ultima Seven Time Clocks to be used in conjunction with the Workday ERP system with SHI International Corp., an approved reseller of ZK Technologies Incorporated, in amount of $99,804.50 using ARPA funding through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 121923SHI to declare 30 Kronos Time Clocks as surplus to be used as trading for credit in any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6G, approval of acknowledgement of notification of acquisition of and vendor name change to Yes Works LLC DBA iGov Services to Open Gov Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6H, approval renewal of bid 222698 Cold Mix Isfaltic Pavement with Unique Paving Materials Corporation in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7A, approval of budgetman request 101810 for public health to transfer $20,000 from Medicaid Delivery System Reform Incentive Payments Program Fund to medical supplies to cover the cost of diabetic, diabetic supplies.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7B, approval of budgetman request 101830 to increase revenue and allocate expenses for the All Rise Grant Veterans Treatment Court Program in amount of $67,071.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7C, approval of budgetman request 101840 for the 211th District Court to transfer $800 for administrative supplies and $1,510 from training and education to administrative equipment, $4,500 from substitute court reporter to psychiatric services, $11,000 for miscellaneous court ordered expense, and $1,746 from visiting judge to statement of fact, and $10,000 from district court-appointed representation, court-appointed attorney to appeal cases for a total of $29,556. Funding is needed for the purchase of a new council chair for the courtroom and to allocate funding for court-related expenses.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7D, approval of budgetman request 101850 to transfer within the district court-appointed representation budget $1,200,000 from family court to court-appointed attorney to allocate funding for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7E, approval of budgetman request 101860 for the 211th District Court and the 462nd District Court to transfer $95,000 from general fund, fund balance into the drug court expense with $50,000 to the 211th District Court and $45,000 to the 462nd District Court. This budget amendment will appropriate funding to assist defendants with counseling, testing, and other services in the drug court program.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7F, approval of budgetman request 101880 to transfer 440 million, $11,497 through the, from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund, inappropriate contingency for the reimbursement of fund balance from the 2024 PI bond issuance to allocate funding for future capital project expenditures.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7G, approval of adopting a budget control policy as detailed in attached documentation, which replaces existing budget amendment policy in any appropriate action.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will skip the 7H for now. We'll proceed forward to item 8A. This is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two new hires in the Auditor's Office, two new hires in the County Clerk, one promotion in the County Clerk, one new hired in the District Attorney's Office, five new hires and one rehired in the Sheriff's Office, all of them are detention officer ones, and we have two new hires in the Tax Office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Thank you. Again, that is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item 8B, this is approval of changing the medical and prescription vendor, vendor networks for the plan year 2025. Gustavo, do you want to discuss this, please?
Yes, sir. So as you know, we task the PBC with going out for bids every so often, usually five years, to go out in the market, see for the best benefits that we can get. So at the beginning of the year, the PBC went out for bids for the medical prescription and life insurance benefits. We were looking for vendors. We are not looking to change benefit plans. After the review, we put into consideration claims repricing, provider disruption, a discount analysis, and fee analysis of what the providers could give us. United Healthcare, Cigna, Edna, Blue Cross, Brucil of Texas, they bid for this packet, and it was decided, after meeting with them, listening to their presentations, that Blue Cross Brucil would be the best option for Denton County, for the prescription and for the
from family court to court-appointed attorney to allocate funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budget may request one-zero-one-eight-six-zero for the two-hundred-eleventh District Court and the four-hundred-sixty-second District Court to transfer ninety-five thousand dollars from general fund fund balance into the drug court expense with fifty thousand dollars to the two-hundred-eleventh District Court and forty-five thousand dollars to the four-hundred-sixty-second District Court. This budget amendment will appropriate funding to assist defendants with counseling, testing, and other services in the drug court program. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budget may request one-zero-one-eight-eight-zero to transfer four forty million center and eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars through the from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund and appropriate contingency for the reimbursement of fund balance from the twenty-twenty-four P I bond issuance to allocate funding for future capital project expenditures. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of adopting a budget control policy as detailed in attached documentation, which it replaces existing budget amendment policy in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will skip the seven H for now. We'll proceed forward to item eight A, this is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. This is Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two new hires in the Auditor's Office, two new hires in the County Clerk, one promotion in the County Clerk, one new hired in the District Attorney's Office, five new hires and one rehired in the Sheriff's Office, all of them are detention officer ones, and we have two new hires in the Tax Office. That's it for this.
Perfect. Thank you. Again, that is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item eight, this is approval of changing the medical and prescription vendor vendor networks for the plan year twenty twenty-five. Gustavo, do you want to discuss this, please?
Yes, sir. So, as you know, we tasked the P B C with going out for bids every so often, usually five years, to go out in the market, see for the best benefits that we can get. So, at the beginning of the year, the P B C went out for bids for the medical prescription and life insurance benefits. We were looking for vendors. We are not looking to change benefit plans. After the review, we put into consideration claims repricing, provider disruption, a discount analysis, and fee analysis of what the providers could give us. United Healthcare, Cigna, Edna, Blue Cross Brucil of Texas, they bid for this packet, and it was decided after meeting with them, listening to their presentations, that Blue Cross Brucil would be the best option for dental county, for the prescription, and for the medical plan. The P B C on April, the P B C Board on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four approved that recommendation, and we are here asking the court to reaffirm that recommendation.
Okay. Members, are there any questions?
Gustavo, what about the premium? Does it stay the same? Does it go up? What?
Premium for employees and dependents, that is something we will be bringing later on. Once this gets approved, we can do the estimated on the premiums. For everybody to know, I'm not anticipating any changes on the premiums.
Okay. You're not?
So, I will say as a matter of background, the P E B C members and the staff and our staff went through, along with the consultants, and looked at the the coverage, not only the evaluated the savings to all of the counties and the member counties, but also looking at the overlap of doctors and the networks, you know, to make sure that there is minimal disruptions. There's there are disruptions with any kind of plan change, obviously, but we we did we took that close to heart and and really had that be a factor, and there is there was going to be minimal disruption as far as the provider network. And so, we that was factored into our considerations, so.
And Judge, if I.
Yes.
Just to add a little bit, and Gustavo, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as the quality of the plan, it's it should be at least as good. I mean, it's not like we are downgrading on anything.
The benefit plan itself is not changing at all. The same benefits, same percentage, coinsurance, auto packet, everything remains the same. The only thing that you are going to see is now you are going to have a Blue Cross Brucil.
Blue Cross.
That's the only change.
And I think it's important for everybody to know, this is not, we're not doing this just because we want to make a change. There's obviously a significant financial reason behind it, and it's not just for our county, but all of our partner counties as well, and we're only a small percentage of the counties that are involved in this. So, I think that's important for our employees to understand that we're just not up here making decisions because we want to move to another healthcare or to another plan. It's just that financially, it makes the right, it makes sense, plus that this disruption has been heavily weighed and looked at. I know it was by myself, and I'm sure everybody else up here, because that was one of our biggest questions and concerns, is is this going to leave any of our employees out in a bad situation where they're not able to get the medication they worked before, or is there a physician they're not going to, pardon me, be able to go to? And as Judge spoke to, anytime you make a change, there's going to be some of those unfortunate circumstances, but at the end of the day, we're making the best decision we can for our employees as a whole in the county as far as financially as well.
And additionally to that, I would be keeping a very close eye on how is this performing? Because I I recommend this change, and I'm going to take full responsibility if something doesn't go according to the plan. So, you will you will be brought up to speed every time that something is not going the direction that they are recommending.
Can I just add another one? Just if someone, if one of the employees is wondering, well, we're part of this where we don't even like it, other counties are part of the decision and everything else, but being part of the P E B C gives us a much better plan than if we were doing this alone.
It is, the background into all this is, the more people into going out for bids, the cheaper, if you will, we can get benefits that would be more expensive to be on our own.
And the judge serves as a board member on the P B C Committee, so.
Some of the board members are the Dallas, Denton, Tarrant County Judges, and they each have a commissioner as well, serving on that according to the bylaws.
And Judge, I think it's imperative that that the employees here, you know, especially the ones that have been here a long time, you know, I do come from the private sector, and insurance in the private sector is nothing like what we have here, I can promise you, and it was a lot more expensive. So, again, we're not downgrading any kind of healthcare options here. We're not providing any less services. It is as our duty to make good financial decisions with the citizens' money, and at the same time, this is not going to hurt our employees whatsoever. So, I appreciate the explanation, and I move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight C, approval of the twenty-twenty-four P E B C budget. A chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item nine A, approval of the Business Associate Agreement between Denton County, Denton County Public Health and the One Span North America Incorporated for the document signing application ensures compliance with the HIPAA regulations for handling protected health information. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, approval of the contract amendment to contract H H S zero-zero-zero-eight-one-two-seven-zero-zero-zero-one-seven between Texas Department of State Health Services Dishes and the Denton County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, I D C U, which is Infectious Disease Control Unit, COVID-nineteen funding. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight, nine C, approval of an amendment to contract H H S zero-zero-one-four-zero-nine-three-zero-zero-zero-one-three to revise and add new language to the statement of work in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten A, approval of the request to the public hearing at nine a.m. on August the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four for the replat of Golden Sky Estates lots seven R one and seven R two. This is four point two-three acres located in Commissioner Precinct one. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B, approval of the Meadow Park Phase One Final Platte, there's one hundred and sixty-three residential lots and eleven H O A lots. This is thirty-seven point six zero four acres located in Commissioner Precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five interlocal agreements between Denton County and the Crump Police and Fire Departments, the Crump I S D Police Department, and the Ponder Volunteer Fire Department for the use of the Denton County Radio Communications System. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of the completion of required continuing education hours for Denton County Tax Assessor Collector Michelle French for the calendar year twenty twenty-four as required by section six point two-three-one of the Texas State Code. Any appropriate action? The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Was this your last round of certification, Michelle? Well, thank you. Thank you for completing that, always for always making us proud. Thank you, Michelle. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thirteen B, approval of change order number two for the Denton County Courthouse on the Square H V A C renovation project to provide two Schedule forty conduits that will run from the Chiller Yard into the building terminated in the basement per P C O number eight, increasing the contract amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four interlocal cooperation agreements for fire protection service between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Salina Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B, approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four interlocal cooperation agreements for ambulance services between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Salina Ambulance Services. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreements, the I C A between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Lewisville for collection of special assessments levied by the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District Number Two. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of the agreement for architectural services between Denton County, Texas, the owner and Coram Architects, architect for the Horn Building Entry Door Remodel, R F S Q two-four-two-eight-zero-seventy, amount of ninety-two thousand for reimbursable expenses not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars of funding to come from permanent improvement, architect fees, auditor line, I'm eight-zero-five-three-eight-zero-nine-zero-one-zero, as recommended by Denton County Purchasing Director.
Judge, I've got a quick question.
Yes, please.
Scott, and I'm sorry that when we talked the other day, I didn't, I forgot to talk about, ask about this, but I'm sure I missed it, but I didn't see in the agreement that ownership of the contract documents would go to Denton County.
I'll have to, I'll have to look at that and see. It should be in there, but.
We typically do that, and I didn't, I don't remember seeing it. Can we approve it, assuming that that?
I think we can approve it, and then we can do an amendment to to the to the agreement if we need to change that language in there.
Okay.
That way, we can get them started.
Okay. Got it. With that, I would move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E, approval of addendum one to agreement for point-of-sale vehicle registration renewal between Denton County, Texas, and Randall's Food and Drug Incorporated, D B A Tom Thumb for seven Denton County locations as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F, approval amendment number one to the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the town of Little Elm, Texas, for construction of the F M two-nine-three-one Ryan Spiritus Parkway Project, extending F M twenty-nine-thirty-one from F M seven-twenty to U S three-eighty, with Denton County agreeing to increase its contribution towards satisfactory completion of the project from three million one, three million one hundred thousand to an amount which would not exceed three million six hundred thousand with funding in the additional amount of five hundred five hundred thousand dollars to come from Precinct One discretionary. This is trip twenty-two, Precinct, auditor line, item nine-two-seven-four-nine-eight-nine-zero-three-zero, and be transferred to Ryan Spiritus Parkway, auditor line, I'm nine-two-seven-four-four-six-nine-zero-three-zero in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G, approval of the request for final payment of right-of-way funds by Denton County, Texas, to the Texas Department of Transportation, amount of two million eight hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars from the U S three-seventy-seven North Project, from U S three-eighty to north of Business Three-seventy-seven East, with funding amount of three hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to come from the judge discretionary trip twenty-two, auditor line, item nine-two-seven-four-three-seven-nine-zero-three-zero to be transferred to U S three-seventy-seven North, judge auditor line, item nine-two-seven-four-five-seven-nine-zero-three-zero, and with funding in the amount of two million five hundred and thirty-two thousand fifty-five dollars to come from the judge discretionary trip twenty-two, auditor line, item nine-three-seven-four-three-seven-nine-zero-three-zero to be transferred to to U S three-seventy-seven North, judge auditor line, I'm nine-three-seven-four-five-seven-nine-zero-three-zero. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? You're more than welcome. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Decided to get these things going. Next is fourteen H, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Carrollton, Texas, for of engineering right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspection, and construction for repairs to Frankford Road Bridge at Ferno Creek, west of Josie Lane, Frankford Road Bridge Repair Project, with Denton County agreeing to contribute two hundred and fifty-five thousand towards satisfactory, towards satisfactory completion of the project, with funding amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand to come from the Frankford Road Bridge Precinct to trip twenty-two, auditor line, I'm eight-nine-seven-four-three-nine-nine-zero-two-zero, and with funding amount of thirty thousand dollars to come from the Frankford Road Bridge Precinct to trip twenty-two, auditor line, I'm nine-two-seven-four-three-nine-nine-zero-two-zero in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have, you bet, we have a request to pull item fourteen out of, repost it at a future meeting. Let's go to fourteen J, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the town of Lakewood Village, Texas, to provide engineering right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, and construction for the Eldorado Parkway improvements within the town limits, generally known as Garza Lane and Starland Drive, to include the addition of turn lane sidewalks, signage, and a gateway feature. This is Eldorado Parkway Project, with Denton County agreeing to contribute eight hundred thousand towards satisfactory completion of the project, with funding to come from the Eldorado Park Parkway Precinct one, trip twenty-two, auditor line, I'm nine-two-seven-five-eight-one-nine-zero-three-zero in any appropriate action. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What we're going to do is, we're going to do community updates. We will take a break and go to executive session, let the Budget Department set up their presentation, and we'll reconvene. Does that sound good to everybody?
Sounds great.
Okay, so let's go to, let's go ahead and proceed, Commissioner Williams, to item seventeen, which is our community updates.
I have nothing to say.
All right, no updates, Commissioner, you bet, Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you. So, let's see, we've got a few things going on in Precinct Two. In Little Elm, we have Farmer's Market at the Lawn July twenty-seventh at ten a.m., and that's on the lawn in Little Elm. And then in Frisco, they are doing a Calling All Heroes event, which will honor all veterans, military personnel, police, first responders, medical personnel, and that will be at the Frisco Athletic Park on the twenty-seventh. And then in Crossroads, also on the twenty-seventh at eight a.m., they have the Crossroads Summer Market at Crossroads Park. Corinth has got the Agora Music Fest Concert on the twenty-sixth at six p.m. with the John Cop Band. That's at the Agora. And then Carrollton's got a couple of events, the Sandbox Excavation, that's on the twenty-fifth at one p.m. at the Elm Fort Nature Center, and then that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
On July the tenth, J P three James Kirby and I, Judge, had the honor of meeting with the Team USA and Robotics from Flower Mound. They're competing, and they're going to Greece in August, and so it was a really nice presentation that they that they gave to us. They needed to meet with some elected officials before they went. And on the twenty-sixth, Lakeside Music Series in Flower Mound, and on the twenty-ninth, Boats and Commission Open House in Flower Mound, a Come and Go Event. In Lake Dallas, we still have Lake City's Trade Days and Farmers Market, July twenty-seventh, eight a.m. to noon. On July the twenty-sixth in Lewisville, we have acoustic jam session. And July the twenty-sixth, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight in Lewisville, we have Newsies, C Y T Present Newsie at the Louisville Grand Theater, and that's all I have right now.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, the first thing I'd like to announce is a benefit fundraiser on Saturday in Bartonville at the Bartonville Tavern. It'll be from five to eight p.m. It's a fundraiser for Cody Clayder, a fire-minded paramedic with the Denton County Emergency Services District Number One, who was injured in March. The event will include raffle, silent auction, live auction, live music, and more, so I hope we can all turn out for that. In Haslip, there's a senior luncheon on July twenty-fifth from eleven to four. In Haslip, there's a senior luncheon on July twenty fifth from eleven to four. Brown Oak has a dive-in movie, uh, not, not a drive-in, a dive-in movie at their community pool, bringing the family and enjoy a movie in the pool. In their rec center, they've got a special offer, July twenty seventh all day. You can drop in and enjoy all the amenities for just a five dollar fee for the drop-in day. And then they're having lifeguard appreciation popsicles all day at the community pool, celebrating the lifeguards on this lifeguard appreciation day with popsicles at the pool. In South Lake, those of you who are interested in bees, that's the best employees ever around Denton County, but beekeeping is a very prescribed and approved agricultural endeavor. And in South Lake, they have a beekeeper program for families, July twenty fifth from six to seven. And then at Trophy Club, they're gonna have funk and food truck at the Aloft Hotel, and that's gonna be on the twenty fourth from five to eight. So, we've got everything going on, from benefit to bees, uh, to food trucks.
Perfect, thank you.
Judge, I forgot to mention something, if I might.
You bet. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. So, um, I spent yesterday morning in in our jail, not as an inmate.
Yeah, right.
But with, uh, our magistrate court. Thank you to Judge Ramsey and Judge Askew and all the staff. I got to learn and watch, um, all of the arraignments and the other things that they do in the defense, um, all of those things, which, um, I just want to thank them for taking that time. It was fascinating and and educational, and, um, I, I really do appreciate that.
And that's the only time you want to interact with them.
That's right.
Professionally.
That's right.